All right, welcome Nottingham to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, October 4th, 2021. We'll start the meeting off first with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oops.
Four times you think of.
Okay, everybody gets a look at the payroll manifest?
Yep.
Any questions on it?
Are there checks in there?
Yes.
The other one behind your computer.
That one.
Oh, this one's all right.
You want to hand those down this way, please?
Yeah.
We got to vote on it first.
Oh, sorry.
All right, I'll make a motion, the Select Board approve the accounts payable manifest of October 4th, 2021, and the payroll manifest of October 5th, 2021.
Second. We got a motion and a second discussion, no? All in favor? Four, nothing. All right, everybody gets a look at the minutes from the meeting on 9:20?
Yep.
Yep. Does anybody want to make a motion on approving the minutes from 9:20? As written?
I wasn't here, so.
I'll make a motion, the Select Board approve the minutes from September 20th, 2021.
A second.
We got a motion and a second on the minutes, all in favor?
One abstention.
Do you abstain?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. We'll go over the boards. I'll start off, anything with Marston?
We have new sponsor signs out there, two sponsors that are supporting us and encourage people to go out and look and see those signs, and if you have an inkling to be a third sponsor, that would be great. Fundraising continues to go well.
What does it cost to sponsor a sign?
You know, Joe Porter is working out the details with different folks, and there's different levels, so if you're interested, he'll have her reach out to you.
Well, just to know, like, if there's a sign for, like, the backboard or if there's a sign for...
There's different, yes, there's different levels of it.
Can you just do banner signs for one? Okay, that'd be something for the people to know, okay?
Yep.
We're working on the school boards out there as well.
Yep.
Excellent. CIP hasn't met yet, I take it?
I'm working on getting that scheduled. Also, I had mentioned last time that we need to discuss the CIP. We don't, it's not on the agenda for tonight, but maybe y'all take one home and check it out, and we can have a... Chris, can you get that on the agenda for next time? And then we'll, we'll review it in detail at our next meeting and see if there's anything we want to add or modify or...
So are you going through the process of issuing the worksheets and having people fill out the worksheets?
We haven't even, like I said, I'm just trying to schedule it at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, it'll be...
Okay.
Budget Committee hasn't met yet?
Thursday.
Okay.
They met a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, they had one meeting.
Oh.
I wasn't there for it.
Were you there for it, Chris?
Somebody yours?
300th?
300th, we had a meeting last Thursday down at the fire department. Upcoming things, they have a pop-up event where they'll be selling, you know, hats, t-shirts, ornaments on the 16th at the dump from 9:00 to 3:00. They're looking to get flags and banners for spring of 2022. I'm going to take the flags down that are up here in the next, hopefully this week sometime, just so they're, they're getting beat up anyways, but we're going to take them down for the winter and stuff and put them back up at a later date. They're looking into getting, making license plates to sell, you know, for the front plate, really nice design and all that, and they'll be good from January 1st to December 31st, Bonfire, I guess they're working on that for January 8th would be the date, but the fire chiefs and Sean have met, I guess, down there regarding where it could be held and where the fire should be and all that, so they're stockpiling pallets and trees or whatever, and they're also going to, I guess, be good because they'll, they could go around looking for people's Christmas trees after the Christmas holiday is over. Bob Davidson spoke about it, somebody to come in and read the charter sometime in May Still working on the booklet, not only the advertising book, but we're also going to come up with a book with the scheduled events for the 300th, and May 1st would be when the ad book will be ready. Also, as of Thursday there, they had raised $27,582 and have spent $16,963, and I think the balance is $10,619.
That sound right, Steve?
Yes, plus the amount the town has put aside.
Yeah, yeah. And then another thing came up earlier there is the, the school kids, they're looking to put a time capsule in town, I mean, it sounds like they'd like to put it up at the square, but would want to know where they could bury it. And I had said something the other night, I thought we were worried about digging anything up there, right?
Yes, we should talk to the Historical Society about that. I think, I think they may have, they may think there's, you know, there, I don't know. We've always steered people away from doing things like metal detecting up there and whatnot.
Yeah, when I spoke to Ever Source last year sometime about possibly, you know, doing a service for us up there underground, we won't touch it.
Yeah, there's, I bet we could find something else that's...
But they, I mean, they were looking for the time capsule, could it be buried in Nottingham Square? Could they put it near the general statue?
Yeah, maybe, maybe in the, maybe on the other side away from the flagpole, but let's, let's talk with somebody that knows, knows more than I do certainly.
Isn't there one at the school?
Yeah, there's one in the front of the school somehow.
Yeah, yeah.
And they want to, you know, put a little plaque there too or whatever, so check it. And then, no, there was one other question that came up the other night. So when they have, when these events start happening, who, who, who has to pay for the, if they need a police detail, ambulance, anything like that?
It should be coming out of their fund that they, we put away, right?
Yep. So Tyler, I don't think you were here at the last meeting when they came in, and one of the things that we asked for was the final schedule of events?
Yeah.
The, the final cost, not the estimate, but the final cost, and who's responsible for it? So we're still looking for that from them.
Like, who's in charge of each event, you know, who's going to be the lead guy for the fire?
Exactly.
This, or who's the lead guy for the, or woman for this?
That's what we talked about the other night, come up with a schedule so we can get that out, so.
Yep, but yes, everything would come out of the fund.
We hadn't talked about billing for our own stuff. I don't think you've told us to do it that way. We can build it into the budget somehow, or we can...
No, I think if it's just extra incurred cost, right?
Yeah, it's just when you, when we do...
Not, not by ours, but if we had to...
If we, if we use somebody else's?
Correct.
Then yes, we would have, we'd have to pay it out that way, but internally it's a different...
I'm not talking about crosscharging, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, not, not, so if there's a Nottingham detail that was needed, it would come out of the...
Well, yeah, I think that's one of the things that we, we needed to finalize here was what's the burden, and what's the cost of the event, and what's the burden on our, our other services?
Yep.
I think we need to pin that down before we can say, yeah, sure, we'll just cover it.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be a lot of overtime.
Yeah.
Well, it's going to be overtime for police and fire, we don't have, you know, we don't have the people, so I don't know what that looks like. But I think we could probably hammer that out as part of the, what's it cost conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's it.
Thank you. Planning Board, we had three things on the agenda for our last meeting. Two of the things on the agenda were actually postponed to a later date, so the big one that we actually talked about was the Watercross events, Cabota Trust, if you want to call it, or if you want, either or. They're pretty much close. When they left the board meeting on Wednesday, there was only a couple of things they need to come back to us on, so we could be seeing them, I don't think we're seeing this one, I think we're seeing them the next one, where they should be getting, I believe, if everything's right, they should be getting their approval for the events through the planning board.
What would they, would they have to come back with?
We wanted, they wanted a written usage to say that they can, for a second emergency exit, pass through Silk property, which is on the backside, so for some reason they can't access over the bridge. There's trails and stuff that actually head out to Stingy River and head over to, yeah, sorry, I just forgot the other name of the road, on the backside of the property, but in order to access one of those, they have to actually go through Silk Conservation Land.
Yeah.
But even though the trails are there, so they got a thing from Silk, but it wasn't actually a, yes, you can do it, it was more of, sure, we know, so we, they wanted more definite, and that was one other minor thing to take care of, but they're pretty close of getting everything set before. So we probably won't see them until mid-November, I don't think, if we do see them.
And how many events is that for next year?
They're going for three, but there's still talk about scheduling maybe two in the fall, not having one in the summer, having, then having a third one in, in late spring, or the other ways, you know?
But is it...
Changing some of the, where the dates are in order to try to appease some of the noise issues that come with the, with the racing.
And is that number going to be finalized with the planning board?
I don't know if that's something we decide on, or if that's, they decide on the final approval of what we do, so.
They'll, they're getting site plan approval for the change in use, or, you know, to use it in a way that hasn't been approved, that's what the planning board's doing, and the planning board's setting up all kinds of parameters around that. You're going to see them for an event license purpose, which is that new thing we set up last year.
Yep, yep.
So you're going to have to approve it, and if you want to condition it somehow or whatever, then you, that's, that's a selectance.
Okay.
But the planning board is, they're going for the three.
Because I just, I didn't know what the process was for them, say they're talking to the planning board about three, and then all of a sudden they decide they want six.
Yeah, and by the time they come through us, they should be out of any type of zoning thing for...
Okay, so then it's in the power of this board to issue the licenses for X number of events?
Yes.
Okay.
They, you couldn't, without going back to the planning board, the Select Board couldn't, I don't think you'd want a license more than, say, three, if the planning board says three, that would be kind of bad.
Yeah, 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 that's where it was going.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that was pretty much, it was a...
Do you know if they're still hoping for anything this year?
No, I think this year's pretty much ruled out.
Okay, I thought that's...
Because we're going to be, by the time they see us, they know it's not going to be until November, and then welcome to...
Okay, yeah, because they, I've been, we've been doing the prep work to get ready to come to you for your piece.
Yep.
We've always been ready to go quickly to try and help with this year, but it looks like that's not...
I think they're pretty much, they know that this is all going to be geared for this fall.
22.
Or this spring, actually, for the first...
22.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, yep. That was it, so move on to Chris, the Town Minister's report.
Okay, well, since you last met, you know, we have closed the sale of the Route 4 property. One of the planning board's first things at the next meeting is a conceptual with the new owner of that, they are raring to go. They have both a conceptual for the whole parcel as well as a specific use for one of the three parcels, there's a tenant of the buyer who is already onsite doing work, getting ready to relocate their business there, hopefully with the planning board's approval.
Was that the building in the house that was in...
It's like a little office-ish building and a garage building, kind of in the middle of the property, the middle of the parcel.
Yeah, the other side of it was the, the tower.
Yeah, if you, if you were to look at it...
There's like a semi little road that goes in there.
Yep.
Yeah, the gate's all gated, but it's right behind there.
Yep.
I thought it was in tough shape.
Oh, yeah, those, I'm impressed that they're going to make a run at getting those buildings.
Yeah, me too.
We had fenced one of them off and essentially condemned it.
Yeah, I mean, I walked it, I saw it.
To try and keep people out of it, not that there was some horrific standard, but it's, yeah, they, they, great, go for it, great, all right. So anyway.
Sorry, I just want to make one comment about that whole thing, because as we all know, that saga went on for years and years and years, and there was very active community, you know, participation and, you know, certainly that, I think, helped the situation a lot, put a lot of time and energy into it. But I also just want to acknowledge all the work that Chris has done towards that as well.
Okay.
Because there were, you know, there's two, there was the local activist aspect of it, but then there was the whole legal aspect of it as well, and I think Chris did an excellent job of helping the board and the various members at various times of the board navigate that whole situation, so I just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Last chapter, hopefully.
Hopefully.
I'll have something else for you.
Can't imagine what.
That one was easy.
Related to that, the owner, the new owner connected me with somebody at the state, I'm going to be coming to you in a couple of weeks with a proposal for a small state tax credit program that we can, we can apply to vacant property like that and give the, give the business owners that, say, create jobs or relocate businesses there, small tax incentives. It doesn't cost anything to the town, it's all state tax incentives, not a lot of money, but it's something we can relatively quickly make available for them to help develop.
Grease the wheels of progress.
Yeah, just, it's a, I think at the scale they're at, it's more of a token than a real significant effort, but it's something, so I'll send you, I'll be sending you more on that this week, and you can discuss it at the end of this meeting. We had our kickoff meeting for the asset management, asset management inventory plan thing that we got the Warren article about last year, all of our highway crew and somebody from DES and our consultant engineer got together in here, talked through all that. They're out, they'll be out surveying culverts and all that stuff, so we're pretty well underway there. The, our frontline guys are going to have a, a lot of training and take on a lot of new data collection as part of it while they're out in the field, and we're going to have tablets for them to, you know, keep track of stuff, and so that training will start, I don't know, probably, probably after the winter, but. Let's see, our planning, so we have a contract planner with Stratford Regional Planning.
Question on that?
Yep.
Have we started paying for that service yet?
The asset management stuff?
No, Stratford Regional.
Yes, we've, yeah, we are under contract with them.
We are under contract, they're paying them now, okay?
Yeah, we've, we've been paying them for a couple of years on that now. Separate from the dues question, I don't know if you want to talk about that?
Well, that's why I'm just...
Different money.
Oh, okay.
Additional money.
Right.
Yeah, and it, and it will always be additional money, it's not a, anyway. But we had turnover in there, we've, they have finally hired somebody to come and be our planner, again, we've been kind of in flux with that for a few months, so that's, his name's Blair Haney, he's been at the planning board meetings, he'll continue to be going to planning boards, but we're back in, back having a person in that role, and we have our own hire in the land use clerk, Kevin Lemieux, who you all met at one of the workshops in here.
Yep, yep.
He's getting his feet under him now, that's a tough thing to learn from scratch.
But nice to see him at all the meetings, though.
Yep.
He's very good about, you know, attending and being really...
Yep, that's, that's part of the gig.
Yeah, no, it's great.
But he's off to a good start, he's figuring things out, so we, we're finally back and well-footed in that arena now, that's been a long, six months or so of chaos, but it looks like we got good folks plugged in there. And then lastly, just a quick reminder, the recycling center's back on winter hours, so nine to five, Thursday through Saturday, no more end of the day business, it's back to sunlight hours, nine to five, for those of you who...
Those are the hours again, Chris, nine to five?
Nine to five.
Nine to five.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Yeah, and that is all I have for you.
Okay, a quick review of action items we had, we've also just, we've kind of covered the 300th Celebration Committee, so talk that. Is there anything new on Highland Ave, or?
Highland Ave, the engineers and the surveyors and the, so another sub on it, they're, they're, they're moving forward, nothing glamorous at this point, but the engineer, we've handed it off to engineers, turning the engineers loose, and they are preparing to get ready to go to the state for the permitting and that stuff. That make sense?
Go ahead. Not a fan of it, but, okay.
Chris, I had a question, so we talked about this document...
Yes.
Last time, and I think everybody kind of had an initial positive reaction, but I did say I wanted to come back and just look at it a little more closer, closely?
Yeah, that's why, that's what item A under General Business was intended to be, you can do what you want, but that's...
Okay.
That was...
That's what this was?
That's what I was thinking for that, you can go wherever you want, but...
Okay.
We'll get there in a minute.
Ben, you're almost there anyway, but...
I'm sorry, okay.
I gave Ben, the last action item was road standards, I gave Ben a list of things from the old ones that we had, which, things I didn't agree with that were on it, and Tony, I think you did give something to him, or, right?
I, I had a couple of short conversations with him.
Conversations with him, right, okay. He's going to put a new package together, you know, if you want to add anything to it or add any comments, left Ben, no?
Well, I'd like to see what you gave him.
I can, I can, this will be emailed, I just basically went off the list and just cut off, I don't want this article, number 20, number 19, number 17, or 16.
Yeah, I think we should all have the benefit of seeing what you guys wrote.
Yeah, I do too, actually, I'm, I'm going to take it a step further, I think, John, it would be wise for you to recuse yourself from any more discussion on this, because, well, you just sold your house and you made it publicly known that you're going to be building on White's Grove Road, which is directly affected by this policy, right? Any changes to the road layouts based on what we decide could affect your, your frontage, your setbacks, so you've got an incentive to...
What if they are all done before we even get to that point?
Doesn't matter, it still has the appearance of you trying to stymie the road standards in order to not interfere with your building plans.
I disagree, I disagree, I think the reason that we recused ourselves from the whole lawsuit was because our...
I'm not talking about the lawsuit, I'm talking about road standards.
Could you let me finish my sentence?
Well, you interrupted my conversation with John, so...
Okay, go ahead.
Let's finish.
Anyways, I just want to get it out there, and I think it would be wise if you recused yourself.
I will take that into consideration and I'll think about it. I'm not saying I will or I won't.
I know.
But...
Can I make one comment?
Sure, of course, John, we're all here to talk, so...
The, I think the whole rationale behind John and I, well, at least for myself, I'll speak for myself, recusing myself from the lawsuit discussions, was because my road specifically was named in that lawsuit. There is no road specifically named in the standards, and so I would not see the need for any member of the board to recuse himself.
Right, but there's property ownership on one of those roads.
I own property in one of those, it's, the road standards are going to apply to a lot of roads.
And I'm, well, I'll think about it more, but I'll let you know how I feel and make a statement about why if I choose to do it either way, so that's in the bubble. That'll be on. Do you have any question?
Nope.
No?
No.
Right, so moving on. We'll go under the assessing, we only have one thing under assessing, it's an intent to cut. Did everybody get a look at that?
It's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
I'll make a motion, the Select Board approve the intent to cut for map 76, lot two.
Second. We have a motion and a second on that, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. And moving to General Business, on the road maintenance.
What form did you, just want to make sure...
So I'm looking at the one that he shared with us before the last meeting where it's got road classifications and kind of their recommendations for maintenance of the different types of roads going forward.
Is that the one with the, the green and red down the bar?
No. No? It had tables lighting this.
You got this, this was for the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Not for this batch.
I saw that it's in here, right?
Do you want to print a couple?
Oh, I got it, was it dated 17th September? Yeah, okay.
Yep, actually, I've really just got one minor thing, Chris, now that I look at it, and that is on the first page of the document itself, not the memo, where it lays out which roads are A, B, and C?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not seeing Tuckaway Shores under C gravel.
Yes, it should be there.
Okay. And then I just realized my second question was not a better question, so, okay.
I don't have that one, you were just looking at it.
Well, he had, he gave it to us before the last meeting. Do you want to look at it?
If you don't mind, just... Refresh my memory. Okay, remember that.
So what did you want to, I mean...
That was it, that's, that was the only thing I had.
Did he need some, like, a decision on that from us?
Well, I, it would be helpful for them if, if we had a policy to go by, to guide, something to interpret, something to, you know, tell them what levels of service do you expect, and we need, we need to be able to tell residents what to expect, and if it's things like, yeah, no, this road's a high priority and, and we, you know, we've got a problem, we're going to get out there quickly, or this road is classified like this and it means that maybe you can't drive 30 miles an hour down that road, maybe you're going to have to go much slower than that while, you know, while it works its way up the priority list. You know, are we going to, you know, are we going to use dust control, which we've suggested for a few, one or two roads? You know, there's, there's a whole lot of things that this speaks to, it's really just a guess at what we think you want, but these are really policy decisions about what kind of roads you want, and we can try and deliver those, but you know, you need to know that it's okay to kind of classify things this way and prioritize them this way, because as you know, we're just... them this way, because as you know, we're just, we're never gonna fix everything right away and we're never gonna, um, you know, not, not every road is gonna be perfect at all times, and so, um, we just, we need something we can fall back on that's, that's the decision-maker saying, yeah, this is what we want. Otherwise, it's, you know, it's me and Sean deciding what, uh, what kind of road you have, and that's not really where you wanna be, so. We think, we need something in the way of a policy. It doesn't have to look like this, but it's what we could come up with.
Do you want to open that discussion now on that, right now, or do you want to set a time of, where we all discuss it, all five board members? Everybody have an opinion on that?
Well, I, I, I mean, I don't have any other questions on it. We talked about it last time, and I just wanted that one last look to go through it. That was the only thing I had, but certainly if you wanna give Ben the opportunity to weigh in, then I think we should do it next meeting.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I'm pretty much good with how that was written and stuff like that, I don't see anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When you say you want a policy, do you want an official vote?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to put it into policy form and say, this is you saying this is what we ought to do. We, I can turn it into something that looks like a policy and, you know, if you're ready for that, um, we can have that to you in time for the next meeting.
I'd hate to see that.
Could we call this like an interim policy? Until we develop, you know, until it's developed further? I mean, like, like a starting point. I mean, he, he's gotta start somewhere, so-
Yeah, but what, what's missing from this? Why wouldn't we adopt this versus, what, what would come next if this was only a starting point?
Um, well, like, any, anything that we do with the road standards that might impact that, I'm just spitballing, I don't know that there will be anything, but, um-
Well, we can make it the policy and we can always update or change a policy in place.
Yeah.
Right?
No, it's true. I mean, I, I didn't have any objection to the way we categorized them or, you know, it's plan of attack. I think you put a lot of thought into it, so.
And I think we need it.
Yep.
You know, for moving forward, just direction-wise.
Yep.
I don't see a problem with it, but that other finalized one would be nice to see, you know, just to make it more official for us to have and post or whatever.
To be prepared to vote on it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just, if you want to send Ben an email on that, just to-
Yep.
Make sure that he's in touch. I'm sure he's gonna watch the meeting, maybe or, or ask, so.
You mentioned the temporary one. Do we need anything temporary until then, or?
No, no, we're, uh, we, we don't have any, I mean, plenty to do, but we're, we're not in need of any guidance in terms of what do we do for the next couple of weeks. We're, we're okay there. Grader's back in service, so we've been waiting for that to come back so we can get out to, uh-
Whatever happened to the other deal that we were gonna use the other grader? Did I ask that before?
Uh, I don't think we've talked about it lately, but it, we, we have. We, we waited until, uh, probably, I don't know if we start doing that in July. But, uh, yeah, for the, huh, how to describe them? The-
Contracted grader.
The Class B gravel roads, from this, using this language, not the, the older town roads, not the newer town roads.
Right.
Uh, so, and that, uh, I don't think we did as much, we didn't use as much of it as we thought we would, but it went very well, uh, was the, the general sense I got from Sean, was it, um, really good quality, effective, um, so if, what we did went well, I don't think we did as much as we thought we were gonna.
So that'll be something in this budget for next year?
I think so, because the, um, you know, if it went well, what we're really up against is how long can we keep our grader going to do the roads that the contractor doesn't wanna do? Ones that are the real narrow ones, the real bony ones that you, that you really do a lot of damage to equipment. The limiting factor for us is gonna be the life of the grader, so the more we can stretch that life out by contracting, uh, for the less challenging roads, the better it'll be for us. We don't, we don't wanna buy a new $350,000 grader if we can, if we can help it.
And the contractor-
Plus the time, the, the staff time that we can, that you can use, one of the places is helpful too, sorry.
And the contractor didn't want to do any of the new, what we're calling the new town roads?
Yeah, we worked that deal out before they were town roads.
Right.
Uh, still not interested in doing them because of the, they're, it's, it's just not good for your equipment. It's, you know, there's ledge in the roads and that, that kills graders, and, um, the width is tough, the lack of material is tough, the, um, you know, so for a private, understandable for a private entity not wanting to tackle that.
Yep.
Someday maybe, but, yeah. Okay, so I can turn that into something of a policy for you to maybe finalize next meeting. Anything else on that piece of that thing? I just wanted to talk two other road things that you don't need to touch on if you don't want to, but you got, um, Sean's recommendations on Moore's Road acceptance.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, we owe that landowner an answer at some point. You didn't, you don't have any firm commitments on that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. If you wanna talk about it, we can. You wanna wait till Sean's here to talk about it, we can do that.
Two, two questions.
Yep.
Did Sean discuss any of this with him?
No, I specifically told him not to, that he was coming back to you first before-
Okay, okay. And is the assumption here that the landowner would do all of this, the town would not do any of this?
Uh, yeah, prior to acceptance, yeah. And this is, this is Sean working, didn't, didn't feel like he needed our engineers, uh, but did go out with our contractor, Plows, out there and does a lot of private road maintenance, or did a lot of private road maintenance out there. Rob, you all know Rob.
Yep.
Uh, he knows those roads as well as we do, especially the parts that-
Yeah.
We never maintained or plowed, so, um, the two of them went out to the site and, came up with this list, as much as it was, you know, it wasn't Sean an engineer, it was Sean, you know.
Is this the guy that came in the one night at the end and he spoke, uh, a couple meetings ago about doing this work?
Yeah, he was here, he was here a couple of meetings ago.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if that's who you're thinking of, but that, uh, that, that's Jim Rossborough, the owner of, of Moore's Road essentially.
Yep.
He came and talked to you, I think, two meetings ago now?
I think it was, yeah.
So that's that. If you wanna chew on it, if you wanna talk to Sean offline about it, or if you wanna, want Sean to come back and talk about it next meeting, those are all choices for you. And then you got this from me. This is the one with the colors and the maps and stuff.
Yep, yep.
Also, not something we need to talk about if you don't want to, but it would be really helpful for me if you read it and understood it and got a sense of what I'm doing, because I'm-
Yep.
I'm wandering off the reservation if you don't keep an eye on me here, so, uh, this is good for one-on-one conversation as well, if you wanna do that, but, um, don't let this one go by, 'cause this has, this is me suggesting things and doing things that you may not agree with, so, um-
Chris, could you clarify what that is?
Uh, this is about, um, uh, how we identify what is now a town road. We, we have a lot of uncertainty around what the new road acceptance means in reality, and we're trying to pin that down.
Yep.
John, any other questions?
Uh, yes.
The road maintenance that Chris has developed, once that is approved, will that be published?
Uh, yes. Is that good?
No, are you?
Okay, you can, I, I was like, you're looking at me, I thought you were gonna, like, there was something else you were gonna say, so I was kinda waiting for something else to be like-
No, I would, I would love it to be, uh, we can get, a promise before is true, but that, that can't be done.
We can do that.
Is that acceptable, Chris, is it?
Yeah, we can do that.
Where could you do that, or?
Uh, I will get, when I have one, I'll get it to you. How about that?
Could you email it to me or something?
I will.
Thank you.
It, it's not gonna be before the next meeting anyway, Steve. I mean, I'm just saying, don't expect Chris is gonna email you something tomorrow, right?
Yeah, you're gonna get the next draft.
Yeah.
But I'll, he'll, I'll send it to you when I send it to them.
Thank you.
Uh, any more questions or anything on the road maintenance part? Seems like we have a little bit of homework to do, so.
That one we got, wait till next meeting to go over it again, or?
Which one?
The one you gave us, the, the new one with the-
With the main-
Update on-
Trunk green and two spurs in pink.
Whatever, you wanna talk about now, we can talk about it now, that's fine.
I mean, I like what, I mean, obviously, we, we knew this was gonna happen with these. I thought there'd be more than what you have on here, so, but, good.
Yep.
You know, 'cause I thought-
Yeah, there, I, I, I think I listed some smaller spots that are still kind of dicey, uh, and there's, there's stuff that I'm intentionally not bringing forward yet.
Okay, okay, that's a good answer to this.
Uh, they're, they're hinted at here, but they're not, uh, we're not ready for prime time on some of that stuff, and, uh, we're really thinking about what do we gotta do to get ready for winter at this point, uh-
Chris, what do you mean getting ready for winter? Like, are, since we never plowed any of these spurs, we're not plowing them, or is this, is that the kind of general question you're asking?
Yeah, no, that, that is a very specific instance of why we need to do this now, because there are, there are-
I'm just trying to put it in black and white, so we know what we're talking about.
Sorry if I'm being obtuse.
Right.
The, um, around plowing, it's easy to be clear. Our intention, unless you tell us to do otherwise, is to plow everything we've ever plowed, as in, you know, something that used to be an allergic, emergency lane, or still an emergency lane, if we used to plow it, we're gonna plow it.
Yep.
If we just accepted it, uh, in, whenever town meeting was-
June.
June. If we just accepted it and we can, and we all agree on where it is, we're gonna plow it. So that's really, in real terms, is the backside of Jamsa, the backside of, um, Saks.
What is the backside?
Over the hill. Uh, the emergency lane designation used to go to the top of the hill. The whole road is now a town road, so we've got, we're gonna, we're gonna plow the whole road. That's our, that's where we're headed, is, it's a classified road.
Would that also apply to Dolph Dam?
Dolph Dam is another one where, when you, when you come into Dolph Dam, Lamprey goes off to the right, Dolph goes off to the left, we, the part that goes off to the left was never an emergency lane. Dolph Dam Road was accepted, it's, that's Class 5 road now, no matter, no matter how you look at it, it's a Class 5 road, we gotta plow. Those are the three big ones that are new plow territory for us. There's a little part of Lamprey that were, that the planning board struggled with, you know, that spot.
Oh, yeah, very well.
That is, doing the research we're doing, that's looking and feeling like a Class 5 road, and we just told the planning board it's a Class 5 road, we're gonna plow it. So that's what we're, that's what we're swallowing right now, is those new areas that were not emergency lanes that are now Class 5 town roads. Though, that's the bulk of them, the ones I just listed, I don't think there's anything else. Tuckaway Shores, the, the section in the middle of Tuckaway Shores, I don't know what we're gonna do there, I, we, it's a Class 5 road, but from everything we can tell, it's ugly.
So, are there any considerations, Chris, for, like, for some of these spots that were never plowed before, that are purely seasonable, season, season, seasonable?
Yeah.
Seasonal, seasonal homes? Where somebody isn't going to be trying to get in there in the winter?
Yeah, that, the only place that I've identi- identified that that might apply to is that stretch of, um, Tuckaway Shores, and I don't even know if that's the case, but the condition of the road is such that it looks like it's never been anything but summer access, um, so that-
There's on either end-
Right.
People that come up in the winter and the one in the middle, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Yeah, with the fence and the-
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um-
No, they do.
Oh, they, okay, so-
Yeah.
That's the last spot. There is a, there is a thing in, in law where you can just call it a summer-only road or segment of a road. I haven't gone down that road yet.
Yeah.
But, you know, 'cause that's not what, you've all just said you wanna do with these roads, and it's not what people voted for, so-
Yep.
Um, but that, in that one spot, I think we may chase that one possibility there, but-
It, it may be, well, I mean, it's hard to back up, but I think on that particular one, it's not as bad coming in from one side, but then you'd have to be able to get around.
Yeah, if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna go up and over, we're gonna, we're gonna go all the way down, so-
I know, I know, I know, yeah, yeah, I know, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't-
These roads are still gonna be handled by a private contractor like we've always done.
Well, the, the, uh, the ones I just listed off, yes, because they've, they dovetail nicely with the contract work that we're already doing.
Yep.
It's same, coincidentally, same contractor.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Uh, so it's just different people paying for essentially the same thing, or perhaps more frequent service, 'cause perhaps town roads get more frequent service than privately maintained stuff, I don't know, I don't know the history there. So, generally, yes, but when it comes to sanding, that's gonna involve town trucks in all likelihood, or we'll see. Different spots are getting treated differently, or, um, we'll see. But generally, yes, contractor. But you, you, you know that there's the first pass that is the, you know, the contractor does the cleanup, in more ice events, it's town trucks that are moving the sand, 'cause we can't get enough sand out there with the contract-only, uh, fleet that's available to us, so, um-
But the net of this is, as you just said, that the town this year is gonna continue to plow everything that it has plowed in the past, and in addition, if it's a stretch that wasn't plowed in the past, but it, if it's now part of a newly accepted town road, that the town will plow that as well, and that there are some trouble spots that need to be kind of worked out.
Yes, the greatest qualifier is can we determine for sure that it is, you know, what is the Class 5, where does it end, what is the, right, so that's the piece that we're working on now.
Yep.
In the, in the three instances that I listed off, that, there aren't actually really great unknowns about that, so I think-
Yep, yep, yep.
If we need to have conversations with property owners in those immediate areas, we will.
Yep.
Uh, but we, we have the benefit of having the contractor that's been doing it is already our contractor, so it should be-
Yep.
Relatively seamless for people on those three roads, or at least two of those three. I don't know who's plowed your stretch before, but-
One of my neighbors.
Right, so that, that one we haven't, it, but it's easy, it's straight, it's an obvious turnaround, it's, you know, we're not worried about your spot, so, um, but yes, what you just said is a good summary of where we are-
Okay.
With that qualify.
Yep, yep.
I mean, we didn't find any like, we, when we had the, uh, little dog and pony show in here about roads that are on the map as, you know, this is the road, and then what would be driveways? We don't have any of that going on, right?
That's really what this memo with the pink and green is about.
Well, that's what I thought, but I didn't, didn't, wasn't put out with it.
Yeah, there's, um, there are things that if you use one definition, they're driveways. If you use another definition, they're roads, and, um, that's the hardest part of this, and that's where I'm, that's where I'm telling you what I'm doing, and that's why I need you to read this and, and feel comfortable with it. If, if I was to describe it, I would say we're being pretty liberal in our interpretation and leaning more toward what was the intent of the, the Warren article and the intent of the voters and the understanding of the voters and the act of deciding this, rather than the purely strictly legal interpretation that we started with, correctly.
Yeah.
You know, we were, and our, frankly, our attorneys have changed their tune a little bit as they learn really what we're up against, it's-
I was always under the intent, and I'll stand by this and say this, if we didn't touch the road before, I don't know why we're touching it now.
The time to-
Just to put it out there.
Time to define that was when the Warren article was put on the board.
I know, I didn't write it, but-
So, I'm supportive of this.
This will turn into maps and, uh, you know, usable information before too long. I hinted at one little struggle with DOT. DOT doesn't like the fact that they're landlocked roads. We haven't solved that one yet, not worthy of your- We haven't solved that one yet, not worthy of your attention yet, but.
Yeah. That's kind of mostly an accounting thing, isn't it?
There's money implications. Because we, you know, the more miles we have classified roads, we have the more money we get from the state, so yes, there is, there is that. It also really affects our ability to map it well, because we, those two systems are linked and.
You take, when you talk about a landlocked road.
Talking about Tuckaway Shores, the entire neighborhood, right?
I, that's, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
Facing any road.
South, south road is, south road is, everything off mountain that goes through Raymond on its way to Nottingham.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got nothing else. As long as you do your homework, I'm fine. If you need anything more from me, no.
I'm good with those two, I just, I do think we need to have another, kind of, some discussions around Moore's Road.
Uh, yeah. And I wouldn't mind. Again, this is not my decision, but. If this is what Sean, obviously, we can read what he's writing, so we're pretty much. Not illiterate to what he's, what he put on the Moore's Road, we can see it's right there on there. But. You know, do we give this, because I don't think Sean's, I don't think we're going to tell Sean that not to take anything off here. Right, so don't do this, don't do this, don't do this. That's not probably going to be our intent of what he wrote on his plan. Unless somebody had a, you know, a different thing with it, that the homeowner should have the right, you know, I mean. There's a lot of stuff on here, there's a lot of money on here.
It's private property.
Well, again, I mean, that's why I'm not saying, we can wait and have a discussion with Sean, or we could just send this off and say, hey, listen, as of right now, this is where. Where this stands for, for the homeowner to know. And we're just delaying the obvious by having Sean come in here and talk about it with us when it's.
Yeah, do it.
I mean. You're not, I mean, this is something where we can push it down the road for another two weeks or three weeks, or we can basically get this over to. You know, Jim and say, hey, listen. This is what our highway department came up with along with. To make that road. You know, acceptable. You know, again, we're not, what's nice here is he's not saying it has to be certain widths, it doesn't have to be this, he's talking about gravel and adding stuff like this. So, and where certain trees that mark to be cut. But. You know. That's why I don't know why, why we delay letting the guy that needs to know if he's going to be paying for this to. Are we changing our mind, anything on there, or does anybody have any, I mean, read it? Did everybody read it, I mean, something you want to think about, or is it? I mean, I'm reading it, it's pretty black and white.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I read it, obviously, John, what I struggle with is that, like. To me, it looks like a big list.
It's, absolutely.
And it's an expensive list. But I don't know that we want to put Sean in the position of negotiating with the landowner.
Well, we're not saying, not saying negotiate, we're just saying to hand this to the landowner, say, listen, this is where we stand now. All right, if he wants something to say, I mean, he can come back to sit in front of the board, and we'll talk to him about it. But at least to give him this heads up now, instead of delaying another, saying, hey, Sean's going to come and talk to us. Basically, he's going to reiterate what he's seeing on this paper, I don't know what kind of discussion we're going to have with him. And then we're going to give it to him, well, why are we waiting two more weeks? I mean, that's just, I'm just thinking of expediting this process, because we've already, the poor guy's been waiting for this list for two years now.
Well, actually not, two years. He came to the board for the first time about six months ago.
Well, wasn't this?
He never came and talked to the board after.
No, 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 right, okay, but. The intent was we were supposed to have something, or whatever, however you want to word it, right, you know, what I'm saying is that, it's been in the making for a while. So, and I think, you know.
I don't know, what do you, what do you think about that, Chris? I'm torn on this.
Uh, I don't think there's any, I, this is your, this is your agreement to make with the landowner, so. I, I think you're fine either way, I don't think, there's no problem with. You know. Making, making the owner aware of what you're, what you're now aware of. I, I wouldn't put Sean in a position to go out and say, well, what do you want to give away on this list of things, of list of headaches that you want to avoid, which headaches do you want to take on? Because that's what you're asking to do if you want to negotiate a list.
No, I wasn't asking to negotiate.
Yeah, just, just make it available, and it gets.
Yes, this here, this is what it is, now, if he has questions to discuss, he can come in to talk to us about it.
Yeah, at that point, it's, it's his decision if he wants to invest in the road to follow through with the acceptance, so.
I mean.
I think the only reason I'm hesitating, John, and, and I agree, it's fine. My only hesitation was coming from, like, I would want to have the conversation with Sean, just to understand a little bit more about why he feels strongly about this. But, I mean, I can go have that conversation with him. So, I'm not opposed to, to sharing it with Jim now, that's, that was where my only hesitation was coming from.
So, I mean, again, I just wanted to share it with him. I mean, where the questions are on there, I can come up, I mean, I think it's well described, you know, starting at number 24, that's pretty much, you know, on the map, which one's 24, and you know where it's. We all know where the ledge cover is, because you're going to see the ledge. So, I mean, what trees he's marked, but you're probably going to notice them because they're probably ones that have been hit by a plow. So they're probably already marked ahead of time, you know? So. And he's a smart guy, so I'm sure he's going to see where the narrower spots where he's talking about the trees are going to go, and.
Yeah.
Again, those are smaller details to be worked out, but at least he can say there, okay, listen, I can go price out.
Yeah.
X them out, and then if he has more details, say, hey, when he mentions this here. Send the thing to Chris, saying, hey, how much does he think this is, six-inch crust gravel? Three quarters, am I going to need? 16 yards, 24 yards, 40 yards, 50 yards? Just to give him a ballpark idea, so that he knows, that's really the only question I have on here, is how much yardage of gravel is he actually talking about?
Yeah. Okay.
That, that discussion is going to happen with us, or with him, or between. If we don't want to put Sean in direct contact with Jim, then it's obviously going to be coming through us, so he's going to, we're going to middleman this anyways.
So the, so the direction to Chris then is to go ahead and share this with Jim, and then to direct Jim if he has any questions, to come back to the, to the board.
Yeah, just make a list of questions that are on there, and then we'll just.
That's fine.
And we can get an answer from Sean when he finds the time to be able to do it back, and.
That's fine.
That way, we're not, I just feel like we're. Moving in the direction.
That's fair.
You know, having something accomplished for, for this gentleman, so that it's not something that's.
We're not screwing anybody up by not acting on this tonight. Or are we, on the Moore's Road?
No, no, nobody, nobody expects you to act on anything other than, you know, like, moving information along, but there's certainly no decisions to be made.
Okay.
A final decision of any sort.
Right.
So we stand, that's, we're going to email it over.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that Sean didn't include that I might ask for at some point is just some, we got to see. That we have some certainty of the road location. Obviously, we know where it is, but what do we have for plans, what do we have for, you know, details of where the bounds of, of the thing, which I'm not sure what we have in hand, or what the owner may have.
Okay.
But that's a. How are we describing where it is?
Does that impact what's actually on this list at all?
No, because you used.
This is more about conditions.
Okay, fine.
My, my question is more about, you know, where are the, where are the property lines involved, and where we're up against, you know, multiple parcels or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only a couple of times that he mentioned about something about little walls being moved or something like that, that might interfere with somebody else's.
Yeah, well, that's where it gets particularly important, yeah. You know, as it, as it travels through the wilderness there, do we need a, you know, complete detailed survey of where it is? No, probably not, because if it gets developed someday, we'll get that information then, and we're probably okay with that, that's a big, that would be a big cost that. Probably limited value, but there may be spots where we really need to pin down. What's, what's the right of way here, where specifically we're, so I may throw something in like that, but.
Any more discussion on that?
Nope.
No, we're all good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, third quarter financials and the ARPA updates.
I feel like I've been talking all night already. All right, so you have Q3 actuals. Through like Friday. Which show us on track to finish the operating budget year with a surplus of. It's six figures, whatever it is. Which, it's probably in the five, 5% range, something like that, it's my guess right now. Which is typical, really, we're, this part of this time of the year, we're really. Looking like we're going to be fine, we can't go over, so we have to be under, and.
Yeah.
There's, you know, a few big drivers in this. The. The highway contracted maintenance projects, that shows us being way over, but we've got Warren article money, and we got, we got some accounting to shift some money around in there. Fire is generally tight. Lot of overtime with running understaffed for virtually the whole year. PD, it will be under because of a deployment vacancy, generally speaking. Highway is going to be tight. It'll be weather-driven, the department, overall department-wise, it'll be up against the budget probably. Recycling will be over, our disposal volumes and our costs continue to, continue to go up.
Do we want to ever have a discussion on that in the future of how we're going to. Navigate that, that cost factor? I mean, do we continue as, I mean, again, this is not a popular saying here, but I'm going to say it anyways. Do we continue to make the dump totally free? I mean, people got to pay for some things to go away, you got to pay $10 for a TV or something, but. Should there be a general small amount, the $20 a year that people pay just to get rid of their trash? I mean, it's not uncommon in other towns to have a, a small fee that you pay. It is killing us, it is costing more money. You know, some residents might not use it, might not pay, some use it, I mean, I don't know, just. A future discussion to put out there is that's, you know, it is, it's, it's not, it hasn't changed, every year, it keeps going, and keeps going, and keeps going, and. You know, we just, I mean, the burden just keeps adding up on us.
Yep, happy to talk about it whenever you wish. We, we, our, our next move is probably. To talk about how we operate the place, and how we police that, what's, you know, how, how rigid are we about what's coming in the door, and how do we track that stuff as it arrives? Because the volume's going up.
Sure.
And is everybody actually paying for what they're leaving?
Yeah, we're, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of ways we can do things differently there that will impact the financial picture more than. Selling $20 dump stickers would, I bet, but we can talk about both sides of it.
Yeah.
There.
Yeah, I'm not going to say.
Yeah, but to bend the curve on that, we're going to have to change. Multiple things about what, how we do business there.
But I mean, yeah.
Otherwise, otherwise.
We also put somebody that's, that's enforcing and being that there as being the, do you want to put an employee there as the, I don't want to use the wrong term, but.
But you, you have some kind of gatekeeping function, or do you have a, you know, whatever?
Inspector, or.
I don't know, and there's, there's a lot of ways to skin that cat, but.
Yeah, that's a lot of conflict that can be coming up too, that we're going to.
It would be a different vibe there, you know, so that's something that you got to decide. You know, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, what is this?
What's it, 400 grand to run this up?
400 grand on a, on a $4 million budget. Right, so, you know, in terms of financial impact, if you, you can do the math yourself in terms of, you know. What's worth.
A lot.
It's a big number.
Yeah, it is.
Not minimizing it, I'm just, you know, if you.
No, but that's today's number.
Exactly.
Three years from now, it's 500.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not something that's, I mean, it's going to exponentially keep growing at that, so.
So I think it's a good conversation to have, to look at the, at the bigger picture and all of the levers available to us.
Yeah, because the town is still growing, go look at the board, there's more houses coming in, there's more, we're not getting any.
Yeah, that, that, it's, it's a big enough question that maybe it's something that you, one of you wants to take on, you know, take the point on and really dig into it, because there's a, it's not something you're going to solve. You know, in a 45-minute chat on a Monday night, I don't think.
Right, right.
It's probably going to require a little more than that, but.
If I get reelected, I'll be happy to take that. Second. I don't know if I'm timed up maybe on this board in order to, to be effective, obviously, if I don't get reelected, I won't be on, so. It'll be muted if I take it over at this point right now, so.
Well, what was Raymond, Raymond was making the people buy certain color trash bags, and they cost one up like.
Sure.
Triple from what they were buying bags for, and.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's very common.
Yeah.
In certain curbside collection towns.
Yeah, they had to be a certain color.
Yeah, you know, you buy a town bag.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's got a seal on it, and it's, you know, four bucks a bag, or whatever.
Yeah, but you get them at Hanford.
It's just a different way of doing the, the fee, it's just now you're just pointing out towards that way, so. Just to bring that up as, since we're talking about that financial, I thought.
Yep. So other than that, big picture-wise, I don't think there's anything. Worth mentioning too much, we're. You know, this, this year, we had an increase that just kicked in in July 1, in the retirement rates for police and fire. So we're now eating that, that was about a.
Have you told us a couple of years that was, ago that was coming?
Yeah, that was, they told us last year that it would take effect middle of this year, and it has, and it's, you know, it was like a 25% increase in that.
Yeah.
In those two line. That will happen again, it'll be a full year of it next year, so we'll feel it, instead of feeling it for six months, we'll feel it for a full year in '22, so that's. That's going to bite. On the bright side, we're hearing good things about next year's health insurance premiums, which is probably the single biggest line in the budget. We're hearing about it, they're hinting at a decrease, so. That's nice. Other than that, unless there's something that you want to dig into, I don't have any other news here. Now, you have some flexibility here at year-end, if you, if there are things you want to do. That are authorized, you know, appropriation, things we have appropriations for, you want to do more of it, you're going to have some flexibility there. Want to use it at the end of the year. And revenues looked fine last time I looked at, you know, the, the big driver there is vehicle registrations, and that's, that's doing fine. Right along there, everything else is kind of out of our control.
Cruising right along there?
Sorry.
Butter bean.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else you want to know about the operating budget, you want to cover? In that world?
Nope.
You want to talk ARPA real quick?
Yeah.
So the, I won't read you my memo, but just a quick refresher, the, the 500,000 in Ameri, what is it? American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. You can respond to the pandemic with the money, you can deliver assistance to businesses and households that have been negatively affected. You can recover lost revenue, you can. Give premium pay to certain classes of employees, and you can do some very specific infrastructure work. Those are the eligible uses of the money. The money is about a half a million. It will all be in hand by next year, and you have until 2024 to commit to spending it, so there's no rush to use this. We, we didn't get a whole lot of interest in, from you, or. We, we didn't get a whole lot of interest in, eh, from you or you didn't seem to want to pursue any kind of, uh, grant issuing, you know, giving money to households and businesses kind of activity. That was not something we know how to do. It wasn't the thing we suggested. It wasn't, we haven't pursued that at all because we didn't hear much interest in, in that particular use. Pandemic response costs, we can, we can find some, but not a significant amount. And where we're comfortable in the operating budget this year, we don't need to go through that. We can, most of those costs were 2020 costs probably and we survived that okay. Our expenses didn't jump dramatically because of the pandemic. You know, we, we saved a lot of, in a lot of places to offset our increased costs, so there wasn't, uh, there wasn't a great need to chase those. We can, we can do that if you need us to. But it's not going to be a huge number in terms of response costs. So, um, those two of the five are probably not going to be popular or, um, likely uses of the funds unless you tell us to do something different. Lost revenue, uh, there's a, there's a formula that they gave us that basically you figure out what your baseline revenue was before the pandemic and if your revenue went down from that during the pandemic, you can use the ARPA money to close that gap. Our revenue went up instead of going down during the pandemic, so, uh, that, we don't have any eligible funding there. That's the best money because it's pretty much open-ended. You can decide what you want to do with it at any time.
Yep.
But we can't. We don't fit. We just, um, the biggest, there are a few big drivers for that. One, our tax collection rates didn't change very much. Everybody in town was able to pay their taxes despite the pandemic. We saw very little change in our collection rate. Uh, our number one source of revenue outside of that being vehicle registrations, that kept pace during the pandemic. So, those two things where you might have expected to see a big revenue drop, that, that didn't happen here. Happened in lots of places, but not here. So, good news, but just means our revenue didn't shrink. And dwarfing all of that was, uh, a big increase in the school district tax in 2020, which counts as our revenue. We collect it and we hand it off to the school. But, um, they raised a lot more money last year, so whatever we did doesn't really matter. So, no lost revenue that we can take out of ARPA for this year, for 2021. 2022, uh, we just sold a million dollars worth of real estate this year. That's revenue. 2022, we're going to look back, we're going to do this math and we're going to see that our revenues went up again because we just sold all this real estate. So, there won't be lost revenue money next year either, in all likelihood. So, that's not going to be a real eligible use for a couple of years anyway. So, you can sit on the money and wait for that. Keep it in your pocket if you want, or we can use the money for the other remaining things, which is premium pay for employees and I detail a lot of that stuff
Yep.
for you in that memo. That's something Ben had wanted to talk about. Or infrastructure. Infrastructure is really in the law is things like sewer systems and broadband and water systems. We don't have any of those things. We already have good internet service. We don't have a public water supply. We don't have a public wastewater treatment. So, it's down to stormwater, stormwater infrastructure, which we have a bunch of, uh, if we define it right. And I think that's going to be the best use of ARPA fund.
Stormwater infrastructure. Would Highland Ave be considered stormwater infrastructure?
Yes, it would.
So, we can get that paid for.
We can get a big chunk of that probably paid for with the ARPA money, yep. Uh, the, that's one of our costs this year that.
Well, any, they could say any road maintenance on our road that washouts that incurred, can that be under that same storm, that's, because it's.
Yep.
So, we got to fix that problem in order so we don't have this problem. Can we use that money to fix that problem?
If you, if you, if you chase the, the one regulation into the next regulation that it refers to and then that one refers to another one, so they've, you know, the bureaucracy has really made this spider web of stuff. If you chase it far enough, you get to the phrase, it must produce some kind of water quality benefit. This stormwater work, so fixing a washout in a road in and of itself may not qualify. Uh, but Highland Ave, where we know we're having a negative impact on water quality in the lake with what's going on now, I think that's a clear, obvious use of ARPA. Stormwater infrastructure with a water, water quality benefit. That's a perfect example of what you can use this money for. And, uh, we're, what we're trying to figure out now is could we do something like the Kelsey Road Culver project? Is there a significant water quality benefit to that, to fixing that major road problem that we have? Getting a water quality benefit and taking care of the stormwater around Culver.
Well, we know ahead of time that it's approved or we find out after we do it.
Here's the beauty of it.
Play the game with them to see.
Here's the beauty of it. Nobody's watching. You're deciding.
It's not like you're submitting receipts.
Exactly. Okay. So, we make a good faith effort. We have a, we, you know, we, we get our ducks in a row. We leave a, a nice file for posterity. I think we can be very comfortable. If you make a good, you make a good righteous decision on, on good information, then you're going to be fine. You don't need, we don't need to, there's not some big bureaucratic overlord approving all of our stuff here.
Too much of it, so.
Okay, yeah.
That's good.
Uh, that is ARPA in a nutshell.
Chris, what happens like, so like, we already got the first chunk of money, right? What happens in the event, not that this is going to happen to us, but what would happen in the event of not having any legitimate uses for it?
You have to give it back.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, you, you get to the end of the 2024, 2025 or whatever it is, um, and you'd have to give it back.
We just have to show that we paid for stuff or whatever.
Yeah, there'll be, there's a reporting function that, you know, we'll have to do, but, um, it's very top level stuff, so.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not nervous that we can't find.
Yep, yep.
Over eligible uses over the next four years.
Right. Okay, cool. Good.
Forty years?
Four.
How many, how many employees do we have in town?
Uh, what flavor of employee?
Well.
Like permanent year round?
Yeah.
Uh, full and part-time, fifty, sixty?
Is that on that list that you said?
Yeah.
That's the highlighted, the yellow and the green?
Yeah, that's, uh, that includes elected officials that are in the payroll system, right? So, they're, they're employees in one context, but not in another.
So, Ben wanted to discuss that aspect of it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we should probably, is that a non-public topic?
I think it, it probably ought to be.
Okay, so we should maybe put that on the next meeting?
Yep. I got nothing else on that unless you have.
Nope.
So, I was just going to ask.
Anybody got any comments or anything like that on there to go?
Okay.
Okay, um, before we go, uh, into non-public, it's, uh, action items for next meeting. We are going to talk about the, you're going to have the list ready for us, right? We're talking about for the road maintenance.
The policy.
The policy, yes, yes. We're going to have, uh, we're going to have road maintenance policy. We're going to have a CIP discussion.
We're going to discuss in non-public ARPA funding as it relates to employees.
Yep. My understanding was that the 300th was coming back?
Yeah, they said either, I, I think, I see the, the next one after that's 11-1. I mean, if we're going to be busy on the 18th, maybe it gives them a little bit longer to, to get that schedule together.
But they may already be planning on the 8th. I think when they were here, we said.
Yeah, I, but I sort of, I'd get back to everybody or whatever, but.
Well, do you want to?
I'd, I'd hold that. If we can hold the 18th for 300, they, they need.
We need the time.
They need time.
Yeah.
They, they need approvals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They should be itching to get in here and get your.
Yeah, they, they will.
Yep.
So, I think you can handle the 18th if, you can fit it if you.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's all I have for your next meeting that I'm aware of at this point.
I have conceptual for the grid for a property.
That's.
Tax incentive plan board.
That's plan board.
Do you want me to raise conceptual for?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I already got that, but.
Tax incentive program for new businesses?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll do that. That's quick.
Will we be setting a time for, um, Sean from Moore's Road?
Well, you're, you, we just decided we're going to give the landowner that memo and say.
I guarantee it gets back to you within that.
And that he's coming back to you, so.
No, I'm sure the landowner is going to get back to you probably.
Yep. Uh, so that comes back to you in two weeks.
Right.
Yep, we can.
So, if the landlord has a bunch of questions, you know, after he gives us this, should we have Sean here to discuss this?
We'll, we'll either anticipate that or we'll.
That's what I mean, just to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kind of just put it out there that it could be a possibility that he's on it. So, next meeting could be quite extensive. That's okay. We haven't, haven't had one of those in.
It's the fun time of year.
I have A and E for your non-public, you have other things.
You good?
Uh, one last thing, did we mention any, we talked about the road maintenance, right? Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Stuff, okay?
I'm good.
Yep.
That's what we're going to talk about for next meeting.
Yes, we have, we have that on the agenda.
Yep, yep.
Got to make sure that was on there so we know what we're talking about. So, morning, and we are about to go into non-public. Uh, we need a vote. After we come out of non-public, we will be recessing the meeting. And that's it. We'll be over. So, thank you guys very much for attending and paying attention. See you in two weeks.
Make a motion. We go into non-public per RSA 91 dash A colon 32A and E.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and second, uh, roll call.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tyler E.